Plan 576 and CUP 1925 McDonald's Restaurant. Petition submitted by Design UA to construct a new 4,000 square feet building with a double drive-through for a new McDonald's Restaurant located at the northeast corner of Magnolia Street and Talbert Avenue in the Village Center Shopping Center. This item is categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA Guidelines 15303. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Tonight before he was precise plan 576 and CUP 1925 for a proposed McDonald's facility at 17970 Magnolia Street and Village Center Shopping Center adjacent to the Sprouts Market. UA does, I'm going to go back to this first slide. UA designs of proposing a new 3,850 square foot building with a double drive-through, which is currently developed as two end tenants in the shopping center formerly the Beach Cities Dog Daycare and a martial arts studio. Both are proposed to be demolished for this project. The proposed McDonald's is located in the southeast corner, the shopping center, and Dutch Brothers was recently approved by the Planning Commission and is currently under construction for their drive-through business as shown on the site plan. According to the applicant, this McDonald's is meant to handle some of the customer load from the two existing McDonald's in the area, including the two in Fountain Valley. Here's the site plan for the proposed McDonald's. The project meets all of our development standards outlined in our development code, including site coverage, setbacks, floor area ratio, parking, building height, and landscaping as detailed in the staff report. Under the Fountain Valley zoning regulations, drive-throughs are required to be designed to have a queuing lane of not less than 150 feet and sufficient space before the menu board to accommodate at least four waiting vehicles. As shown on the applicant's queuing analysis in your staff report, the drive-through lane measures 173 feet from the interior and 189 on the exterior, meeting that code requirement. The double drive-through as proposed would have two ordering kiosks with sufficient space behind those positions for four vehicles for a total of six vehicles. Any drive-through backup that may be experienced will occur onsite in the parking lot in front of the McDonald's right here, as I'll explain later. Right here, the drive-through service alley on the east side is proposed to be modified right here with a pork chop that will prevent incoming traffic from the alley right here on the east side and traffic coming off of Talbert this way. The proposed drive-through lane will come in here, wraps around on the north side, vehicles will exit out towards the west into the shopping center parking lot. The drive-through queuing capacity has a total of 10 vehicles. In the queuing study prepared by the applicant, analyzed four other McDonald's throughout Southern California, and their observed vehicle queue lengths ranged from seven vehicles to 15 vehicles, where the 15 vehicles observed was at the McDonald's at Brookhurst and Garfield in Fountain Valley during the time of 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So this proposed drive-through design will provide queuing capacity of 10 vehicles in this drive-through right here. Should, again, 10 vehicles be exceeded, the queue will back up onsite into the parking lot, not affecting traffic on Talbert or the service alley over here. So this pork chop designed right here is a triangular little raised curb that will prevent cars from coming in over here and force traffic from, force traffic to make a right turn only and back onto Talbert. Public Works has also proposed that, it's not on this diagram, but to I mean, Public Works has proposed, they proposed the pork chop and a modification to this island right here to create a triangular piece to prevent cars that would try to force themselves to come into the drive-through from the service alley that much more difficult based on the design of the curving right there. Staff worked with the applicant's team on this design and development of the drive-through due to the proximity to the residential to the east right here. The closest drive-through speaker located right here is 58 feet from this house on Bay Street and, I'm sorry, it's 58 feet to the property line wall from the speaker and 76 feet from the speaker to the edge of the house. An existing right here, existing six-foot wall separates the shopping center from the service alley from these single-family homes on the east side and the north side of the shopping center. So with this anticipated noise from the drive-through, such as idling vehicles and ordering, the ordering speakers, staff worked with the applicant on proposing an additional wall along the drive-through adjacent to the service alley as a noise barrier. And that proposed wall will start here in the landscape planter and extend to the north up here. The wall totals 74 feet located in a five-foot landscape planter between the drive-through and the service alley. The wall will be constructed in staggered sections, starting at four feet here, going to six feet, and going to eight feet in these three sections. So the zoning code requires the six-foot wall adjacent to residential with a minimum setback of five feet with a landscape planter. As proposed, the new wall, which is right here on this elevation, is over 40 feet away from the residential on the east. These are the proposed elevations for the McDonald's, sticking with their new, modern, contemporary design. The stack stone at the base will match the shopping center and the newly remodeled Sprouts and Dutch Brothers building. This sign right here was proposed to be illuminated, however, we've created a condition of approval that this sign be not illuminated after dusk, and they would be able to put a photocell timer on that to regulate that. Here's the proposed floor plan. Entrance over here, customer area here, ordering kiosks here, like you've seen in new McDonald's that have gone to that system, and two pickup windows in the drive-through and the ordering, or the pay station right here. So the Village Center has recently seen development activity with the approval of the Sprouts Market back in July of 2021 and the approval of Dutch Brothers' drive-through in March of this year. Because of this activity early on in the application process, staff suggested that the applicant reach out to the adjacent residents behind the Village Center, informing them of the project. This intent was to outreach, was to give the neighbors a notice much earlier than what is required for notification for public hearings by the city, which is 10 days before that hearing. The applicant's team mailed notices out to residents along Bay Street, Talbert Avenue, Le Grand Circle, informing them of two community engagement meetings that they held on August 30th and September 13th of this year, at which time residents provided comments on the project. The applicant documented the neighbors' concerns and listed them along with their responses to those comments in attachment number seven of the report. Staff has included conditions of approval, should you wish to approve the project, that can address the concerns about the following issues: drive-through speaker noise, vehicle noise from the speakers and the vehicles in the drive-through, traffic on Talbert, food smells coming from the business, exterior lighting, views of the rooftop equipment, and the size of the building, security for the restaurant, and deliveries. As previously mentioned, staff worked with the applicant to amend the plans to incorporate certain changes to offset potential impacts. These include an addition of the wall adjacent to the drive-through lanes to create the barrier, the pork chop design to ensure that queuing lanes do not extend into the shared drive aisle, and the street, and technology that allows the drive-through speaker volume This concludes staff's report, and please feel free to ask me any questions. The applicant and their team are also present tonight to answer any questions you may have. And I'd like to address the Redfold items. The two changes to, the Redfold items include two changes to the staff report regarding the number of required parking stalls for the shopping center and a reference to the martial arts business, tenant space being included in the demolition square footage. And condition number 78 and 79 are to reflect the pork chop in the drive aisle next to the service alley. And lastly, the applicant has asked to modify condition number 46 to mirror number 45 with regards to verified complaints and the director's ability to modify the condition of approval. That concludes staff's report.
So can you go back to, thank you, can you go, thank you, can you go back to the picture?
To which page?
The picture of the, with the drive-through and everything there? So the traffic study, there's parking lots or parking spots in front, both sides of the drive-through, right? Above and below it, basically, and you're looking at that?
There's parking here and here.
Okay. So it'll be interesting if it gets busy, people trying to get in and out of those parking spots.
I have a couple of questions for you. You mentioned the martial arts and the dog camp will be, building will be demolished?
That's correct.
Will that be demolished regardless of what's going, or is it because of the McDonald's?
To my, my thought is it's because of the McDonald's.
McDonald's, okay. And then, what's the exact hours of operation of the McDonald's?
For McDonald's, 24 hours.
Oh, it's 24 hours?
And are the other two McDonald's in Fountain Valley 24-hour McDonald's?
I don't believe so.
They're not. I actually saw the 24 hours and kind of was shocked, so I actually went online and looked at McDonald's and Carl's Jr. and basically, you know, fast foods around the city in Huntington Beach, and I did not find a single 24-hour, so, of any of the brands. So, you know, I think that would be the first thing we want to talk about is the hours of operation.
I now have a third question. Do you know what the hours are for the Dutch Brothers?
I believe their drive-through, I would have to check.
Thank you.
I think it stops at nine or 10. It's not 24 hours.
Any more questions to the staff?
I have a question. So on the, on the traffic plan, the queuing line and everything, did you consider a one-way traffic through the little parking lot instead of two-way traffic?
One way here?
One way, yeah. That you come in, there's only one way into the parking lot, right? Because you can't get in from the, from the right-hand side, correct? Because you put the pork chop.
Yes, we modified it to limit ingress here.
Right. So there's only, the only way in is from the left.
Yes.
And so, the problem that I see is that, you know, once you start queuing, of course you're going to block off the, the parking spots, but my concern is, is then the only way out really is going to be to the left, the way the big arrows are pointing. Now, it does show traffic, it shows the cars, the red line, right, going out the driveway on the right?
Yeah.
Okay? But if there's a queue, you won't be able to get there. And, and the concern I have is that, you know, I mean, and I'm sure some people may talk about this tonight, but the reality is the high schoolers are going to be coming here. Okay? And so the high schoolers, when they leave, they need to go back to the high school, which is a left-hand turn. And the only way out, and that's probably going to, and it seems like that's going to be the biggest, the most busy time, because that's what you said it was from 11 to whatever, the queue.
From 11 to 1.
And, and now we got high school drivers. And so, you know, one, one advantage of, the thing is, with that parking lot right now is people, if it's, and Talbert is very busy these days, extremely busy, and once you start adding Dutch Brothers, who knows? Okay? So the, the thing is, is right now, when, when Talbert is very busy, instead of making a left-hand turn out of that, the driveway on the left on your drawing, people go through this parking lot right now where the dog camp is, and they come out that right-hand driveway. They make a right-hand turn, because then they can go to the little turn, turnout and make a U-turn. That's what everybody, yeah, okay? So, so the thing is, the way this, if you have a queue line in there, it's going to be impossible to exit that driveway on the right. So, so, and, and actually, I know of another, there's a McDonald's in, in Huntington Beach off of Venger that has one-way traffic through their parking lot like this. And then what you could do is, you could put the queue line, the way they have it at that McDonald's is, the queue line would be, it would still be two lanes, like it's shown here, but instead two ways, one way, and then the queue line would be closer to the McDonald's building. Now, you'd have to probably chop off a little bit of the curve to get the turning radius to get into the, the order lanes there. But what that allows you to do then is that opens that clear lane on the right-hand side to allow exit. So basically, the queue line right now is on the, on the bottom where all the cars are sitting.
You referring to right here?
Right there. That's what the little gray circles are, is the queuing line for the drive-through. And then the large arrows pointing to the left is meant to be traffic going to the left.
These arrows?
Those arrows right there, I'm assuming. I mean, I don't know what else those arrows are.
Well, this is a parking area, and so it's a two-way drive aisle, so people can exit this way as well.
Right. But if it was one way, they could also exit out to the right.
If it was one way in?
One way, only one way. And at Dutch Brothers, that's the way that parking area is, it's, it's also one way. So I think that that would be a huge improvement. And, and I, you know, my, my concern here is, is traffic, high schoolers, left-hand turns. Accidents, everything else. So, just wondered if that was looked at at all.
I don't believe that was thought of during this process. I think would be appropriate to, unless there are other questions for staff, to have the applicant speak, and then go to public hearing, and then we can bring him back and have this discussion in greater detail, once we hear all the information.
For me to understand, you're talking about left, if somebody leaves the plaza and makes a left turn on Talbert?
Commissioner Esker, I believe, is saying on the
To go east?
I have an aerial here.
You can't really talk, turn left there, though, because the traffic backs up from Magnolia, so it's almost impossible. I was there today. It's almost impossible to turn left, because the traffic backs up at that light so far that you can't go left from the, from the one that's close. Yeah, you're going to have to make a right, you're almost going to have to make a right-hand turn and go right and around. I mean, I tried to make a left today, and it was impossible.
What time is that at?
I was there at four, 3:30, 4 o'clock today. But you just get enough traffic at that light right there that if it backs up far enough, the only way you can go is right, unless somebody stops and leaves you an aisle way that you can creep across. And then the problem is, you're trying to crop, go across two lanes of traffic, plus be able to get into the other side of the street right there.
If I may, sir, if we can have the applicant speak and then bring the public in so that we can consider all testimony before we have a discussion?
Absolutely.
That'd be appropriate.
Are these people listed here on Zoom, or they are blue card?
I'm sorry?
The people listed on the, on the iPad.
The people listed on the, okay.
They are all blue card.
Yeah. So we'll have the applicant speak, and then we'll call up the public.
Planning Commissioners?
Let's close the staff report now.
I appreciate you guys having me. This is Todd Huber. I'm with Paragon Commercial Group. We've been the owner since August of 2021, so that includes what Matt was talking about in terms of bringing Sprouts to the property, the reinvestment in the kind of facade and the parking lot, and now the Dutch Brothers parking lot, and this obviously very important project to bring McDonald's in to stabilize that area of the center. We've got the full team of technical experts here. I'm obviously here. We really appreciate your consideration. Troy Stevenson with McDonald's is here alongside with me. We were all at the community meetings we had right outside of where Beach City's dog camp is, and met a lot of our neighbors, a lot of neighbors have my cell phone, they know me. We've tried to be really good neighbors and before this project and then as part of this project to make sure we keep Village Center as one of the best centers in Fountain Valley like it's been for 40 years and hopefully for the next 40. So we're here for any questions. Troy, I'll let Troy.
So you represent the plaza owners?
We're the owner, yeah. And I know there's confusion, because there was a change in entity name, but we've been the owner since '21, so I wanted to make sure that you guys knew.
And the gentleman represents McDonald's.
Yes, Troy Stevenson, thank you for the opportunity to present the project. What we'd like to emphasize is McDonald's takes a stand in their communities. We try to be an excellent community partner. We also believe in giving back through various methods, whether it be the raw McDonald House charities, or investing in local teams, et cetera. One of the things I would like to say is, working with both the citizens, with Todd, with your, with the Planning Commission, I believe that we have developed a site plan as well as a design that will benefit both the community and the area at large. I would like to emphasize a couple of items. The anticipated queuing for the drive-through is never expected to be more than eight or top out at 12. So the other thing that I would like to say is, the average delivery time for a order, from the placement of order to actually picking it up, is less than two minutes on average. That allows us to process drive-through queuing extremely efficiently. If you look at us compared to a Chick-fil-A or an In-N-Out, we exceed their drive-through standards five times, and we're very proud of the efficiency with which we do so. I would like to say also that we did make concessions with regard to the drive-through wall, with regard to the elevations of the building and such, and we do believe this is the best design for this facility, and we think it'll be a benefit. So, thank you for your time.
When you mentioned queue line?
Yes.
Where on the plan, you meant, if it's from the order kiosk to the window, or from the, from the entrance to the property to the order line? What queue you are talking about?
It's the queue, it's the cars that are in order from the order point back, so that's the six, and then you have space for another three and four going forward. And so, in between the pay and present window, you also have another full car. So you essentially have three cars there, and then you have two going back to the actual order point. And, and what, we call that the merge point where the two cars come into one, and then you actually go into the single lane.
So you have two order lanes and one delivery lane?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The one thing that you will notice is, we do have three drive-through windows here. We have a pay, a present, and what we call a pull forward. If an order is taking longer than it normally should, if it's of excessive size or something, what we do is, we pull that forward to the third window to improve the efficiency, and you can see at the exit of the drive-through, there's actually a bypass lane, and that's to allow just a normal flow of traffic.
And is this a corporate or a franchise?
It will be a franchise location.
Can I ask you a question on, on sales? What percentage of sales is drive-through compared to walk-in?
It averages between 72 and 78%.
Drive-through?
Is drive-through. And that also includes digital pickup as well. And those drivers do not go through the drive-through, they go into the restaurant to pick those orders up. They actually, in some cases, now represent 12% of our orders. It's, it's, obviously after COVID, we saw a sharp increase, and it hasn't decreased. People, I mean, it's a, it's a convenience.
Would that be the same for like Uber Eats? Would they, would they be the same thing?
Uber Eats, DoorDash, yes, all of those companies.
How did you determine the eight to 12 for the maximum queuing when the Garfield and Brookhurst, you said, was 15?
Yeah, it's based on the traffic flow, the volume projections, and
And the consideration of a high school?
Yes, is in that.
Next door? And you think, so that's going to be less than at Brookhurst and Garfield, where there's no high school nearby?
In the drive-through, yes. A lot of that you'll see will be pedestrian traffic.
The kids don't have time to, they're not, they're not going to have time to walk, you know, from the high school. It's not close enough to walk there, get their food, and get back, so it's going to be probably a car full of kids coming in, going through the drive-through. So, so did you, I mean, did you, I mean, I know you, you look at it kind of, you know, at the site, but we know the area, we know the high, how close the high school is.
Yeah. I can ask our traffic engineer to discuss that.
So I'm sorry, yeah. My question would be, I don't know if there's a way to pull up that, the site plan that has everything? Can I go back to it?
It's on the screen currently.
My question would be, how does this coexist with?
Oh, there you go. I'm sorry.
And that might be the traffic engineer's question, but how does this coexist with the Dutch Brothers, the Chevron, the ATM, Bank of America ATM? And then also, at some point, Sprouts is going to pick up, right? How would, how do they coexist traffic-wise?
I would have to defer to the
Yeah, so maybe we can table that and ask them.
Can we bring your traffic engineer, please?
Yes. Hello, good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Robert Vu. I'm a licensed traffic engineer in the state of California. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Did you get the question?
Yeah, my question was, how does the McDonald's coexist with the B of A drive-through, the Chevron, the Dutch Brothers, and at some point the Sprouts will increase in capacity?
Yes, we, as traffic engineers in the state of California, we utilize trip generation rates published in the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, and that surveys existing fast food restaurants, for example, with drive-throughs, and a lot of those fast food restaurants are contained within other retail uses, so those are captured in a lot of the rates that are published.
So you just go to a, a table in a, in a standards that is countrywide and doesn't take into consideration, I mean, do you, does it separate California versus other states? Does it consider location next to a high school? You know, what, I'm assuming those are pretty generalized averages.
Yeah, it's average over the nation, so a lot of different states, and the way the manual separates, I guess, types of settings, it's suburban, rural, urban, and in this case, this falls under suburban, which suburban settings contain multiple different uses. So it comes for residents, schools, other retail, for example.
And, and you factored in the, the 405 freeways entrances are basically on Talbert and Magnolia?
Yes, a lot of these retail uses are located in, adjacent to large arterials, and those account for tens of thousands of volumes.
So is that where the eight to 12 came from, then? Is from this, one of these books for the queuing, or is that a different, where'd the eight to 12 come from?
So we've taken a lot of survey locations in Southern California, and many restaurants of this size have about eight to 12 queues. The ones that have larger than 12 vehicles queuing, those can accommodate at least 20 vehicles within the drive-through, and we have plenty of similar-sized McDonald's that have that eight to 12 range.
But didn't, didn't the report say that the one at Brookhurst and Garfield is 15 peak?
The one located on Brookhurst, correct, is 15, and I believe that has a larger drive-through.
Okay, and that one, I mean, that one isn't even near a high school. I mean, there's really not much, I don't know where everybody's coming from, because there's no, I don't know, there's no office buildings or
But it's on a much, it's on a much bigger street. I mean, I kind of wonder how, this is kind of a off-the-grid store almost, really. It's, it's not like, that other place has got fast food places all along down there in a much bigger street, so I think they're going to get a lot of through traffic stopping to get that.
There's a lot more options there, too.
There are. But it's a, that's a, what, Brookhurst is eight lanes across? A lot of cars going in and out of there.
Any more questions to the owner?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to understand the reasoning of why you would want to go 24 hours.
It's not necessarily that we will operate 24 hours. It's one of the things that we asked for during that thing. asked for during that thing. The actual individual franchisee will make that decision. And as I think was pointed out earlier, those hours are often restricted by the franchisee. It's, it's a function of the business. And if, if there's a restriction on that, that's, that can be discussed as well.
I would just be surprised in a neighborhood like this, this community, that at 24 hours would even be worthwhile, because most of the 24-hour stores I've seen are in busier, more urban areas, and this doesn't seem to fit in this community to have a 24-hour store.
I don't disagree with you on that.
Yeah, I mean, the 24-hour ones are off of freeway entrances and stuff.
Yeah, that makes more sense, off of the freeway.
Could you tell us if the planning commission was interested in approving the project, but with limited hours, what your other stores in the area, what those hours are operating at?
Typically, they close between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. The one thing I would like to note is, we have taken off the elimination of the sign at the rear. And you will actually see, there's a photometric study that shows there is no light leakage onto the alleyway behind our site. I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
So you have completely eliminated the illumination? I thought he mentioned that it was, it's not going to be illuminated after a certain time, but during the day it is? Because you, from what I can tell, when you look at the site plan, you're not even going to be able to see that sign.
No, it's...
At all. So, don't light it at all.
And we're fine, we're fine to comply with that. Hey, it's, that's no issue at all.
Is the city traffic engineer here? Do we have?
Yes, he is.
How are you doing?
Mr. Chairman, Timo Galvez, I'm your deputy director of public works and city engineer, ex-officio city traffic engineer.
Good to see you, Timo.
Good to see you, too.
A question regarding the, the point that our colleague commissioner raised, the trying to exit, the left exit, make a left turn on Talbert. That's even before McDonald's. Now is a dangerous left turn.
Are you talking, so, are you talking?
Yeah, maybe if you do the...
No, no, yeah, take the arrow to the right, take the arrow to the right.
Ma'am?
To the right here?
Yes. This exit, some people try to exit and make a left turn on Talbert, going east.
Yes.
That's, besides, even before McDonald's, some people try to do that, and it is dangerous. I live in the neighborhood, and I use that plaza often. And what's the possibility of putting a sign right turn only?
Yeah, we can, we, on the, on the site?
Yes.
On the site, we, we can certainly look at that.
Because the reason is twofold. First is safety, second is it affects the queue. People who wants to take left turn take more time, because they have to clear the traffic on both sides, because there's not much island to, to park in the middle of Talbert. And so they hold traffic behind them. Even if you want to take right, you cannot do it if somebody's in front of you. See, as a potential mitigation to what she raised, is if we sign it to make it right turn only, it will not affect the business at all, because people still can come in. But just when they exit, it's faster for everyone. Faster for the people on the plaza, and faster for people to get in and out. That's a, just a suggestion. I'm not asking for a traffic signal here or electric. I know it's very close to the other signal, the main signal on Magnolia and Talbert. But restricting the traffic exit to a right turn will serve those two purposes, safety and the queuing inside the plaza.
And I think you'd have to do it on both driveways unless we make it one way, because the other driveway is also an exit, so you'd have to make a right turn on both of them, I think. Because the other one's in the, no better position.
That one, I think there's a median, I think there's a median.
I don't think it can exit just, just...
Yeah.
So...
Mr. Commissioner, we can, we can certainly look at that and, and consider that as an, as a, as an option to be implemented there.
Thank you.
So the only concern I have with that is, now you're forcing everybody to go right, go to the signal, and make a U-turn at the signal. So then, the left turn lane is going to get backed up. I mean, I had a simple suggestion of allowing the traffic to go through the parking lot, exit that second driveway, so that they can get out, make a U-turn and go back. The other benefit of having, you know, Commissioner Spears mentioned, you can't get out of the parking lot because the traffic backs up. Well, that prevents a right-hand turn also. So, one benefit of being able to exit that other driveway is, it gives you an extra so many feet of maybe the traffic didn't back up that far. And so you can exit out that one and maybe make a right-hand turn and get out.
Usually, the traffic doesn't back up as much on the right-hand turn lane as it does on the two that go straight. So normally, if you make a right-hand turn only, you can make that right-hand turn. There's a window.
Oh, to get into the, and then have to go?
And then you've got to go right. But if you try and get into the other two, or if you want to go left on Magnolia, it's almost hopeless, too. You know, you can't get out there.
So again, the benefit, if you can exit out that other driveway, it gives you time to get in and get over, and also make a U-turn at that.
That's the same situation. Now, you're still making a U-turn regardless. Either you got to do it at the light, or you got to do it at right.
Yeah, the, the benefit of doing it...
It's a short distance, though. It's not that long of a distance. Looking at it right here. It's a longer distance to go from that second driveway down to make a U-turn. There's more of an opportunity to do that than just coming out and trying to cut a crossover and make the U-turn there.
Yeah, but if the cars aren't backed up, you can actually get over. If the, if the traffic is backed up. You know, all I know is, you know, I thought once the freeway bridges were, were done, that the traffic would get better on Magnolia and Talbert. It hasn't. It hasn't. It's only going to get worse. I mean, it's only getting worse.
But if you make it, if you make it one-way only, the only people that you're helping, really, are the people parked in the lot there, right?
Yeah. And, and anybody from Sprouts or anything else could also go through that parking lot, exit out that driveway.
They could. I mean, I would...
They would have to.
I mean, everybody does it now. Everybody does it today.
If, if I may interject, we can kind of go back and forth on this subject for a while. I think, at the end, after the public hearing is, is, we go through the public hearing, receive comment. If there's still a concern from the planning commission on circulation and access and those types of things, you know, you may want to provide the applicant some additional time to look at these things. I don't think they can agree to or kind of contemplate these circulation items tonight as we're discussing them. I think they need to go back and, if that's the direction you're going to provide, but I think we need to get through the public hearing and then consider the public testimony before we come to some conclusions. And so I think it'd be appropriate to, to receive public information, public comment, and then get to that point.
Good.
If you're okay, I'd like to call the first, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The hours for Dutch Brothers are 5:30 to 11:00 PM, seven days a week.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The first speaker we have, and I'm going to ask for, make apologies before. I'm going to maybe butcher some of these names, but, so I apologize, but Merle Yap, I believe?
Very good!
Oh, thank you. I never get these right, so I appreciate it.
There's so many things I've been writing down, but you're talking about the high school. What about the junior high? Those kids walk all around that area, and I could just see people getting hit all the time. And the traffic on Talbert coming from Brookhurst down, there's, unless you put a traffic light there, there's not going to be anyone that can make a left into there, and they'll be backing up traffic all over. Right, I used to live in LA. I moved here to get away from this, okay? I had friends that lived near a Jack-in-the-Box, and the houses there, the noise was horrendous. And then, I have friends who live in Westminster, and they put up walls at one of these places. Homeless started living between the walls. I mean, I moved out of LA to get away from that. I don't want it here when I live half a mile away. It's, you're going to need more traffic lights, you're going to need people, security, because it's going to turn into a horror. Right now, I can't even get out of my own street, my own track, because of the traffic on Magnolia. And the people come down, and then I'll, I'll see an opening, and I'll go out, and then somebody comes to turn, thinking they're going onto my street, and they'll make a U-turn. And by the time they're done, I have to wait for more traffic. It's just, it's horrendous. It's, and I live near the junior high, so the junior high people in the morning, parents dropping them off, I'm on La Roca, which is that little way that goes to, it's, and those kids on those motorized bicycles.
That's what we should be talking about.
I mean, you're just going to have horrendous traffic accidents, probably fatalities. You just have to, come on. You're going to have to put up streetlights to get in and out. That's the only way I can see it. The junior high kids, the walls, I said that, more traffic lights. I'd like to have one on my corner so I can get out. But, you know, it's, or at least put in a no U-turns at my street so that I can get out. It's just, it's incredible. Why did I come here from LA, and now this is turning into LA? It is. It's turning into LA.
Okay.
The crime, the traffic. Oh, do I get extra time?
Based on that, you can keep talking for a long time.
Well, I, I just, I'll leave it at that, because I know there's a lot more people that want to talk. But please, think of this.
Broke the clock.
Thank you.
Hi. I've been a resident and a homeowner in Fountain Valley for 24 years. I love it. It is a nice place to live. But this, having a McDonald's in our center is ridiculous. The traffic right now is already so horrendous, we can't, we can't even use that Talbert Street to get out. We have to go back and get out on our Slater Street. We cannot get out. And if we do, we have to try to somehow edge our way around and, you know, make a U-turn. Anyway, I regress. But anyway, I think crime is going to be a problem. I mean, you get, studies show that fast food restaurants are twice as likely to experience violent crimes when compared to full-service restaurants. You're going to get homeless, who are going to, you got, you know, loitering. We have a really great place where we live, and this center is not the place for a McDonald's. It just is not. And I'm sorry, but you got a lot of slick business people here tonight. But you know what? They could care less about us as residents. Absolutely. We know the area, we know what it can, you know, we know how it works. We've lived here. They could, they probably don't even live here. And it's like, they're making decisions for our neighborhood? For, absolutely not. I'm sorry. They can take it to another area, but this center is not conducive to a McDonald's. We don't even know what the traffic's going to be like for the Dutch Brothers thing yet. And we have Sprouts, you know? So anyway, give us a Christmas present early and say no. Deny this, please.
Jim McMillan?
Yeah, I think everything I said has already been covered, but in addition to doing a traffic analysis on Talbert and Magnolia, you better do a traffic analysis on the parking lot. Because, you know, people going north of Magnolia are going to come in one of three entrances, and they're going to go out on Magnolia. People coming in on Talbert are going to decide to go up Magnolia and vice versa. So you got, you got a lot of turns that are already impossible, plus you got a parking lot that's going to have Dutch Brothers in it, it's got Subway, it's got Sprouts, and it's just a prime place for accidents. You're going to have to put a stoplight in the parking lot just to get people out of there, so. And you've already acknowledged the noise problem, because you're building noise walls. So you've already acknowledged these things are too close to people living there, okay? And those walls do not absorb noise, they just reflect them. You, you could hear freeway noise now. It doesn't go away, it just reflects. So, I echo the, it's just the wrong place to put a McDonald's. Put it on a four-lane highway someplace, you know, but not in that small shopping center.
Anderson. So, first, I'll acknowledge, commissioners, I respect your position. You guys have to make some tough decisions, balance what's best for the city versus what's best for the citizens. And I'll even tip my hat to the Team McDonald's here. It's an American company, it's an American brand. Proud to eat there, and wish I'd bought stock, more stock 40 years ago.
Yeah.
But with that, I have some concerns. First, we've already beat traffic pretty much to death. But if you look at the package in Appendix C through F, which I believe are pages 43 through 54, they modeled the queuing times for four hours, 7:00 to 9:00 AM, 11:00 to 1:00 PM. There's no evening queue model. So we really aren't getting a full picture of what might be going on traffic-wise as Talbert builds. And we've already, we all know Talbert's horrible at, at the evening rush hour. And if you want more proof, go down to In-N-Out and watch 30 cars back up in their queue. So, are we going to get 30? I don't know. But with that, that leads me to my most important point. No one's going to argue that there's cars idling there. The cars are idling, and they're going to off-gas. The exhaust is going to go somewhere. I looked at the, the entire package, there's no plume model for what might happen with that exhaust. In that document, it says the closest house is 61 feet away. I don't know about you, but me, I don't want my kids or my grandkids playing in the backyard at peak rush hour with exhaust that's coming out of cars constantly going through the drive-through that's 61 feet away. There's got to be some sort of health analysis done before you, I please, before you stamp approved, do some type of plume model and figure out what's going on, or what could happen. And it isn't just going to be the 61-foot house, it's going to be the whole track as the wind is predominantly from the west to the east, so it's going to blow the exhaust in the neighborhood. And if you don't do the plume model, it'll do it by itself. But it's going to take three or four, maybe five, six, seven years. But when there's a cluster of illness, whether that be cancer, asthma, or God knows what, we'll find out what's going to happen. So, I respectfully ask that you plume model. And then I will, I will finish and say, with the utmost respect, it's your duty to protect us, the citizens. Thank you for your time.
Molly McMillan?
Okay. Well, we've, we've done the traffic, we've done the exhaust and the health matters. Let's pick on the kids again. Will it be a collection of trash that they leave around? Will they be sitting in their cars, munching on burgers, playing their radios loud? Will they be hanging around the center? And we've already brought up the driving accident-type potential happenings. So, I'm concerned about that, too. We haven't even started seeing how many people will go through Dutch, the Dutch Brothers coffee shop, okay? So, we have a lot of things to consider before this happens, or hopefully doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, I'm not a public speaker. My neighbor couldn't come, and I was the one nominated to come and represent us. So, I am not on Bay Street. I am on the street, which we call the mamas and papas driving their kids to the high school. I can't get out of my driveway mornings. I have to think, what time should my doctor appointment be? Because can't get out. Now I'm going to have to worry about, let's see, oh, it's lunchtime. Now they're driving to McDonald's through Oak, that's the fastest route if they want to avoid Bouchard. So they come down Oak, and they zip over Talbert. I, I miss the days of Blockbuster, Bruce's, Veggies. I miss, I could safely walk my dog to that center. And now, I'm not, I'm not going to walk to Rite Aid to get my prescriptions. I don't even, I, I wouldn't even feel safe doing that. I love McDonald's. My husband will drink too many fraps. I would, I would venture to say I'd rather see some pickleball courts there. That would be my thought for, it's healthier. We need more of them. But I'm with her, I'm going to pick on the kids. But I'm with her, I'm gonna pick on the kids because I already, I already deal with the kids, year after year after year after year after year. And I, like she said, I think trash, more kids, the scooters, the cars, they're gonna speed because their lunch hour's not that long. So they're gonna be speeding around, and I'm with them, this little bump, this little turn where we do, where we come out and go right and jump in the middle and go do our U-turn. That's my escape pod from Rite Aid. That's how I go if I don't walk to it. And that's gonna be, I can't even see driving my car there now, seriously. There's too much traffic there already, just, just going over to get fish and chips. I mean, it's, and like the gentleman said, all the traffic that's gonna feed onto Magnolia now, it's a nightmare. I mean, I, I love, again, I love McDonald's. I don't eat a whole lot, but I do like it. And like, we don't know what Dutch Brothers is gonna do. My Arizona relative says it's Dutch Bros. I'm supposed to say bros. I love a good cup of coffee, but I, these other two Fountain Valley McDonald's are not near residences like this. When, when this was brought to me, I told my neighbor, I said, "You're crazy, that's, there's no way they're putting McDonald's there." And then I come to find out that, "You're really thinking of this? Really?" It's, it's, please, I just don't want it. I ju, it's, it's not safe. I've already seen one kid on a scooter hit in that parking lot, and we didn't have anything going on, so... All right, I'm done.
Erin Tran?
I just wanna say that, like, we haven't even thought of the delivery trucks coming in for like the McDonald's or like the Chevron unloading the gas. So if there's already like congested traffic there, just think about like, if there's trucks and then cars involved as well, it's just gonna be even way worse. And I have two little sisters where one goes to Tamora, one goes to Fountain Valley High School, and it's already difficult getting out of Bay Street, because I live on Le Grand Circle. So like, it's just, I already have a problem with that, and I don't, you know, support the idea of building a McDonald's instead of like, maybe a third place for all the students hanging around, you know? Just, just wanted to say that.
Fusako Takeda?
I have a couple comments or questions outside of my time. I want to address things that were spoken about by the gentlemen sitting here who were not timed. There were two things. The walls that were mentioned being built to mitigate noise. According to the representative at the South Coast Air Quality Management District, walls only dampen noise. They do nothing for the air quality. The air will go over the fences. And also, traffic, and these, I'm only mentioning these because they're not in my prepared remarks, and I'm just at three minutes, a tiny bit over. Okay, traffic is bad on Magnolia and Talbert already. I have to agree with everyone on that. Okay, you can begin my time. My name is Fusako Takeda, and I live on Bay Street behind the Village Shopping Center where a new McDonald's has been proposed. The two proposed drive-up lanes for this restaurant would be very close to backyards on our street. It's impossible to imagine how disruptive a 24-hour McDonald's would be with increased traffic in the neighborhood, cars idling in drive-up lanes, orders shouted into speakers, and lights visible from bedrooms and backyards all night. Add to that, air quality concerns. Idle car exhaust from drive-up and food pickup lanes 24 hours a day is bad enough, but those lanes would be next to the Sprouts Market loading dock. Sprouts heavy-duty delivery trucks have a documented history of sitting in the dock with the engine running sometimes for as long as an hour. On December 4th, 2023, a truck was in the dock from 6:56 AM to 8:01 AM with the engine running the whole time. Earlier this year was reported, the EPA has recognized that the health danger from fine particulate matter in truck diesel exhaust is more dangerous than one thought, and stronger emission standards have been proposed. The EPA Administrator Michael Reagan has said, "Fine particulate matter is both deadly and extremely costly." Just as concerning, though, is research from UCLA that also found that fine particles from wear and tear on vehicle tires and brakes appear to be a significant and growing source of particulate pollution. Cars idling in drive-up lanes also stop-and-go braking. Unhealthy air can't be measured yet at busy McDonald's drive-up lanes that also include dangerous diesel exhaust. All of this, however, totally increases the potential of unsafe air quality for our entire neighborhood. It doesn't help that Sprouts Market was granted a variance by the city for their loading dock to be more than four feet closer to homes behind the shopping center than regulations allowed at the time. Also concerning to me is the demolition of existing buildings and proposed new construction. Not addressed in the proposal are mitigation measures for homes affected by toxic cement dust and other debris from demolition, as well as other physical aftereffects of both demolition and construction work. Finally, McDonald's restaurants are just not built next to single-family home neighborhoods. I'm really not too surprised at this because I believe City Council...
Ms. Takeda, your time is up.
...simply wouldn't approve them over residents' objections. Every neighbor I had contact with is opposed to having a busy fast-food restaurant.
Ms. Takeda, if you can wrap it up, please.
Pardon?
Your time is up if you can wrap it up.
Okay. Michelle, would you finish my remarks?
Would you leave, would you leave out? I believe?
So if I can, did you speak?
I did put my name in.
Okay, do I have?
On a card. Michelle Rucker.
Oh, right here.
Okay. So I'm Michelle Rucker. Every neighbor I had contact with no opposed to having a business fast-food restaurant right next to our homes. I'm also submitting petitions to opposition from the residents of all four houses immediately adjacent to the proposed McDonald's. There could be other issues to be concerned about that I'm not aware of, but because the ones, but because... So the ones I've mentioned here, I'm asking that the proposal for the new McDonald's not go forward. Thank you. Can I use my time? First of all, I just wanna thank Todd because we've worked together, Todd Village Center, regarding another issue we had beginning of this year, and I appreciate that he has sent emails out to myself and I believe to Sharon regarding the proposal for McDonald's. So we got to go down there and take a look, and we got to buy your help by kind of spreading the news in our, spreading the news in our neighborhood. I live on Le Grand Circle. My concern has always been the traffic piece, coming out of Bay Street onto, and making a left-hand turn out of there. And now with all these other businesses which thrive and bring and come into our city, I'm also just concerned about, again, what everyone's brought up here, kids, children, traffic accidents, who's at fault, who's, you know, things like that, in regards to all the development that's happening so quickly in our city, plus the high residency, all that stuff. Um, let's see, what else? Sorry, guys, I don't have my notes. Um, yeah, so I think that's it. But homeless, I'm concerned with. I've already seen our new resident homeless gentleman that's now in our area, and I saw him in Huntington Beach, and now he's traveled up to Fountain Valley. And, oh, one thing I wanna bring up, is there a way that within 500 feet of our residence, if it can become more widespread of the whole city of Fountain Valley and news being notified about developments? Only because I may not be affected just here, but when I'm driving to other parts of the area, I'm affected still, right? I live in the city. So I think if there's a way, we can expand that, or if it needs to be put on a ballot, tell me how to do it, and I'll see if I can do it. Thank you.
John Yurje?
All right, good evening, Commissioner. Just a few things here, appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name's John Yurje. I moved here in 2010 with my wife and daughter. We were looking at Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley, we picked Fountain Valley because it is a nice place to live. It was a nice residential neighborhoods, good-sized yards. I live on Second Street, which is across Talbert, about three houses in from that street. I smell the fish place all the time, well, not so much anymore. But one thing that really hasn't been talked about is, is the smell. Now, when you're walking by McDonald's and you get that smell, ah, yeah, okay, but 24 hours a day, or even, you know, if it's not 24 hours, all day, every day, the neighbors aren't gonna wanna smell that in their backyards. But going in a really, it's, it's the traffic. People have talked about that, and it's really not just the, I can't get out, which is already getting bad, but it's, you're gonna have people coming out of there, coming out of the drive-thru with hot coffee, food, they're gonna be distracted coming out, that's gonna increase the danger to the kids going by on their e-bikes, walking, there's dozens and dozens. I'd recommend, if this even gets considered going further, that a study's done and, you know, someone counts how many kids are actually, you know, going past that driveway and parking area every day on their way to school. I live that close, I didn't get a notification of this, I just happened to see it in Facebook a couple days ago, so I'm not sure what, what broke down there. Could've missed it, but I usually don't miss those things. So we already talked about the air pollution issue, the smell, the trash, the noise at night. They talked about the sign, you know, appreciate, right, you know, making, making the offer to, you know, not light the sign, but at night, there's gonna be all headlights in the, in the drive-thru for the folks that actually live on Bay there. And I really think that the Commission and then City Council needs to do a cost-benefit analysis of this, because the benefits are all for, you know, McDonald's Corporation, the franchise owner, the Plaza owner, but the, the costs are increased risks of the residents who live in the neighborhood. And I think, again, as was mentioned, that's part of your job as this commission, is to look out for the residents of Fountain Valley. One thing that wasn't talked about, more employees are gonna park as well, most of them probably from out of town, so, you know, that's just additional, additional traffic as well. I like McDonald's, it's just not the right place for it. Thank you.
Sharon Clark?
Oh, I know the traffic's been beat to death, but I tried to think of some solutions. I live on Le Grande Circle, I've lived there for over 30 years, and I love it. I was thinking, if they could put, have you, you know what, Trader Joe's at Five Points, where they have that driveway, drive-out, they have that, and you can only drive out, you can't, you can't go in any way on the parking lot, because you, you talk about Fountain Valley and Fulton, but you've got Courageous, and my kids used to ride their bikes to Tamora too. So we've got a lot of, a lot more traffic that should, yes. And so I was trying, that's what I thought. I also went to the city engineers and asked them to do a traffic study, which all I saw was a strip on the other side of Bouchard. I know it's too close on Bay Street to put a light, but I was thinking of a light at Oak, because when I pick up my kids from Fountain Valley, I would come down Oak, too, so it's a very congested street. And then I asked if we could have a, when you come out of Bay Street, if you have a, keep clear, because I can't even turn left into, to get into Bay. So if, and they said they'd have to do a cost study. I'll pay for the paint. But I've seen those on Beach Boulevard and different places, and people do acknowledge them. So if we had to, if they had to keep that open, that would give us a chance to, to get out a little easier. So, and also, the other thing I was thinking of is, the people who live on Bay Street, you, you don't know our floor plans, but our bedrooms for our children are all in the back of the house, so they would be the ones that would be hearing, "What would you like with your fries?" Or, "What sauce do you want?" So I'm just, see, I have nothing against McDonald's, I spend a lot of money there for my kid, but I don't think 24 hours, and I would beg you to not let them go 24 hours. Thank you.
A resident at 9189 Le Grand Circle?
Oh, that's me.
Okay.
Karen Cahy?
So part of the appeal of living in Fountain Valley is that it feels like our own little town, with our own little locally-owned shops and services in this little center at Magnolia and Talbert. You can fill a prescription, get groceries, take your kid to tutoring, take your dog to be groomed, entertained, boarded, whatever. You can get a chiropractic treatment, and you can get your dry cleaning done. You can also get your eyebrows threaded. You also can great, a lot of good food, pizza, Thai, Korean, sandwiches, ice cream, fish and chips. This center has variety. Lots of small, local employers who've been there a long time and will lose business with the addition of a drive-thru placed right at the edge of their parking lot. Eventually, the presence of a McDonald's is gonna cut into these smaller businesses, and this could eventually result in their closures, job loss, driving out the diversity of our community, one of the things that makes us special. The addition of McDonald's will also result in the immediate loss of Beach City Dog Camp. This local business is a great service with an excellent reputation in the community. It brings additional diversity to this little shopping center as well as to our community, much more so than a McDonald's would. Sorry. Take it away, and we'll have to go to HB or Costa Mesa for the same services we once had so close to home. Quoting now from a study conducted by a Texas-based consulting firm called Civic Economics, studies have found that national retail chains, including restaurants in general, pay lower wages and benefits than do locally-owned businesses. By that measure and others, it is found that the chains generate fewer positive ripple effects in local economies. They procure less, they bank less, they contribute less, and participate less. As big restaurant chains spread across the country and wipe out local businesses in their wake, America becomes more homogeneous, and the unique character of our individual communities is lost. As we all know, there are three nearby McDonald's, all within less than two and a half miles from this location, and I'm sure you guys all know where they are. Therefore, it doesn't really seem necessary to build another one so close, and certainly not right on top of a residential neighborhood, I really feel, for my neighbors on Bay. That's it. Thanks.
Sal Manriquez?
My wife and I bought our home on Elizole Circle in 1986, and while we love living in Fountain Valley, we find that the worsening traffic has deteriorated, deteriorated the quality of our life. We've seen a multifold increase in our traffic, particularly on Talbert and Slater. Traffic is so dense in the morning and afternoon commute that we cannot make a left turn from Bay Street to Talbert, nor from, a left turn from Juniper to Slater. So we're literally hemmed in, and this is getting worse now with the increased traffic. So I know that part of your job is to plan the, not only the residential part, but also businesses that are coming into play, and I'd like to voice that the increased businesses that are coming in are decreasing the quality of life for long-term residents like myself. I would share with you that that map needs to be bigger, because part of what's missing from this map is an extension of Bay Street. As you cross Bay Street, there is no sidewalk that goes across the street. There's already trap, jaywalking that goes across through there, that's likely to increase with, with the McDonald's right there. There are many... There are many days that I can't make a right because of what they said before, that traffic going, going westbound on Talbert blocks, the traffic volume is so great that it extends from, past Bay Street towards Oak, and so I have to wait there many lights. So putting McDonald's at this site is a poor location for McDonald, for McDonald's. It really is not a good site to put a fast-food restaurant so close to that intersection for a number of reasons, but particularly the traffic, also the increased risk of accidents. Again, we said that that map really is not showing the biggest part of the problem, which is how this intersection interacts with the rest of the neighborhood. Again, as you walk from this McDonald's towards Fountain Valley High School, there's, they have to cut into the neighborhood. There's no straight walk. There are, there are like pine trees that are going across. That's a problem. And again, we already have, we have homeless now, we have, we have jaywalkers going across there. It is hemming us in. We get hemmed in from Slater, we get hemmed in from Talbert. It's a problem. With regards to the traffic issue, the exhaust, that is a real issue. Small particle exhaust increases cardiovascular risk, as well as the increased risk of heart attacks and strokes, as well as the increased risk of autoimmune conditions, which are all on the rise. The people that are most vulnerable are the young and older adults, which are many in the neighborhood. Please vote no for McDonald's in our community.
Lillian Yao?
Hi, thanks. Again, as a planning commission, you guys have our city, the residents, at your best interest, and I, I also know that you have to work with owners of the business properties, and it's a tough challenge to be an owner of this particular location. I also agree with everybody else. I don't live in this neighborhood. I live at Tal, I've been over at Talbert and Bouchard, and some of you may remember when there was a Taco Bell at that corner, and the amount of traffic and accidents and whatnot that occurred. It's better now that it's not a fast food. I mean, it's not a major fast food, because Tropical Smoothie is found throughout the nation. However, it's not like the Taco Bell it was before, but you do see an increase in traffic at the peak hours of a high school, coinciding with the moms, with the students, and then lunch hour. So, we've already talked about the high school drivers and traffic. 24, if this goes forward, 24 hours, I would highly discourage, because the only reason you need to be open 24 hours is because you've got the people that are hungry after they've gone drinking, and we don't really want to incur those accidents as well. Traffic lights, I'm not sure what the ordinances are. The hospital went in at Brookhurst and Talbert, and there's a street light now at Foster and Talbert, so that we can all get out of our neighborhood. If you look at the corner of Adams and Brookhurst, where the Whole Foods Shopping Center is, there's also a CVS, it's very much like this corner, and there's a traffic light right there in that same parking lot to get out. So that's something else to consider. All right, so let's see, one, two, three, where's my number three? Sorry, scribbling notes. Four, covered it. Five, covered it. Six, oh yeah. That location just doesn't seem to be the right location for McDonald's. We all know, when we want fast food, and we can't decide what fast food we want, we go down to Burkehurst and Garfield. Or we go down to Harbor, right off the freeway. You've got five burger places there, including McDonald's. Seven, I don't know, something like a pickleball court, or a ping-pong place. We lost our recreational mini golf, which the high school kids really utilized, and we, I don't know if Tommy's Burgers is still there.
It is.
Okay, but something like a ping-pong place might be an acceptable alternative as an owner, that's something I would look into. And let's see, what else? Smells. I drove down 405 to Harbor, and my windows were up, my air conditioning was on, and I got a whiff of, oh, it was canes. So to what everybody else is saying about the smells, that's just my experience here, and I'm not at that corner, I'm just as a resident of the Fountain, of the city of Fountain Valley. Let's move forward in a positive way that everybody, it's a win-win situation. Thank you.
Zach Duchene?
Hi, thank you for taking the time. I do live on Bay Street. I live almost, kind of behind there, I'm the fifth-house end, and if this were to pass or go through, or whatever, if you guys vote for it, I would encourage you to do, or the property owner to do, a really good job of policing the truck traffic. That's the biggest problem, from my perspective right now, is the trash company and the deliveries for Sprouts, and all the different vendors back there that, that go to the, that go to that location. They come, I know they're not supposed to come before, I think, seven o'clock, seven o'clock, but they're there many times before seven o'clock, idling. They can also seep directly into our yard from their truck, because their truck sits up high, so, you know, it's not great, but we knew that when we moved in, and, but...
Sprouts wasn't bad?
No, it wasn't, but they had, Big Lots still had deliveries also, but it was, I think it was maybe less frequent, so, yeah. Now that Sprouts is busier, and, and there's a lot more truck traffic, that would be my biggest concern, is, is to really enforce that, that seven o'clock barrier, because that seems to be the magic, the magic hour. So, I'll, I know there's a lot of people that want to speak, so I'll save my time. Thank you.
Actually, that was the last request I have. Lisa, are there any other requests on Zoom?
That closes the public speaking. So, now discussion of the commission. Start from, any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, my biggest concern, as I stated earlier, is the coexistence of the Dutch Brothers and the McDonald's. I, I used to live in Arizona, and I know how busy Dutch Brothers can potentially get, and they're geared toward kids, you know, high school students, and McDonald's somewhat is as well, and I just think that the amount of vehicular traffic going in and out of the center, especially in the points that we already talked about, and everybody's already mentioned, but I just think there's a, I have a potential, I have a concern about what could potentially happen here, having two drive-throughs and the other things I've already mentioned. So I'm not, my opinion, but I'm not 100% on board with, with the McDonald's here, and especially knowing that when I asked the staff that the martial arts center and the dog camp were going to be removed specifically for McDonald's, anyway, my, my opinion.
Can I chime in on that? I think there's a confusion. The building might not go, right? But those tenants, martial arts guys retired, Beach City's dog camp, we've helped, not a, before we owned it, not a viable business there. We kind of helped them get through COVID. We've kept them on, they, they're not in lease term, they're month-to-month, and we've kind of kept them on whatever they can pay. We've allowed them to pay, we haven't put them in. So, the building might stay, the businesses will not be there.
Understood, appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Spears?
I did have a question about, so, how, how many employees are on a shift traditionally at McDonald's?
Twelve to sixteen.
And where are they going to park?
If we, if we may, do you want to come to the microphone?
Yeah, I think on, on parking, I'll let him speak specifically to McDonald's. We are overparked here. After this is all done, I think we're overparked, if I did the math somewhere. But we are significantly overparked, where, right now, and when we take down, I think it's one thing, and you guys probably have seen it on the site plan, we're taking down roughly 6,300 square feet of space, and we're putting in 3,800 square feet of space, so we're taking down the density of the center. The center will be the least dense it's been since it was built. We're taking down GLA, 9,200 square feet between these two tenants. McDonald's is 3,850, if you want to include the Dutch Bros, that's 800, 905 square feet. So this, this center is getting less dense, we are overparked. In terms of where his employees park, I'll let him hit on specifically on that, but just in terms of the overall parking for the center, where there's cross, cross-access rights, we are overparked.
So on, with regard to employees and such, there's two points I'd like to make. The typical McDonald's employs a crew of about 85. That, that brings jobs to the neighborhood. One of the most interesting facts, if, if you look in the history of McDonald's, it, at one time, I believe it was six years ago, one in 12 people had started their careers at McDonald's, and that includes high school kids and the such. So typically, a shift will have upwards of 12 people, that's at its peak, and of those, six to eight will be parking on-site. That, that's, that's the typical numbers for this. So, anyway, just two points to consider.
Can I ask you a question? There's been a lot of talk about the delivery trucks. Where are the, I would say, hard time understanding, where do the delivery trucks come now for the stores that are there?
All the stores, or the stores that are there, they would load in the, well, I guess I got to get to the site plan if we have one that has the existing, all, they load all in the back there, so their trash and their loading is all in the rear, closer than...
And that's where the McDonald's delivery would be?
Yeah, it'd actually be pushed further away from the neighbors, in the back there.
Yeah, and on that note, a couple things. The average McDonald's gets three deliveries a week, and those deliveries occur in less than 30 minutes typically.
And is there a time limit, and when they can come?
We, we could, would consider that. Typically, our, our deliveries range from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We avoid, we avoid the morning and the evening.
My comment is, I, I visit this place a lot, I, I go to Rite Aid a lot, because I'm old, and, you know, you got to have a lot of prescriptions when you get old.
I'm right there with you.
But I notice now that they've got the parking kind of closed off there while they're doing the Dutch Brothers construction. There's still parking, but I, I just, it's amazing how the transformation of this thing has, has happened over the last few years, because that place used to be pretty dead. When, what was the store that was in there before Sprouts? Big Lots. I mean, you'd go by there, that place was, it was pretty, it was pretty dead, and now to see this thing all of a sudden, like, explode, and you can see that, you know, it's thriving, it's really thriving, which is good. I mean, you want to see, you want to see the businesses do well. I'm just really concerned that we just overextend this, this corner, and we got so much there that it becomes overburdened. That's my biggest concern, is I, I know how busy it is there, and I understand the concerns of the residents, because I, I've go by there a lot. The one thing I was kind of uneducated, I guess, on is, I didn't realize high school kids go out to lunch in their cars and go to the, I didn't realize, I certainly couldn't do that when I went to high school, so, must be a little different, but are they going to the other McDonald's now, the one down on Brookhurst? Is there a lot of them going down there?
Yes.
Are they?
Yes.
I was curious about that, because I wasn't aware that that was a big thing with the high school kids, but I can understand that, but I guarantee if we had a, a whole house full of kids here, they probably wouldn't all be against it. I would imagine, because that would be very convenient for them, but I understand the other congestion situations that you talk about. There are, there are a lot of concerns there, and I, I'm a very pro-businessman, and, and a lot of you brought up the fact that we are representing the, you know, youth citizens, and we are. We're also here representing the city, and we're trying to make the best decisions for businesses from income standpoint. We're trying to balance it out, but you're absolutely right. We here, we are here to look out for what's best for the, for the residents and for the city at the same time, so that was, that was a good point that was made.
Mr. Lopez?
I understand the congestion. I live in that neighborhood as well, and I always have the same problems as everybody else, turning left out of Bay to get onto Talbert. I drove my daughter and my son to Courageous every day for the longest time, and there is congestion, but it's during school time, usually, and then you get a period of nothing, and then when people get off of work, then you get congestion again. Now, as for the high schoolers, I didn't know that they get, how much time to get? Two hours for lunch? Because I, I can't understand it, because I only get 30 minutes for lunch myself, and I, I just can't imagine a bunch of kids rushing to McDonald's, because I, I had to stay on campus, and I know my son wouldn't go, because he likes getting the free lunch over at the high school. You know, he gets a free lunch every day, plus whatever we feed him, and, you know, I do see, there are benefits, believe it or not, to this. The fact that, like Commissioner Osborne said, it, the, the center, the Village Shopping Center is thriving. It's getting busy, it's nice to see that. It hasn't been that way, you know, yeah, I miss the old stores, I miss Toy City. How many of you remember Toy City?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I miss that, but things change. I like, now, Chair Azam brought up the fact that, is it possible to put a right turn, or a right-turn-only sign? I think that's a good idea, that would be a good idea, that might be a consideration, something to look into. Also, someone brought up the fact, is it possible to put, keep clear? I don't know how, what the cost or the study and that would be, but that might be nice to, to put right there at the end of Bay. You know, that's, that's a possibility. People actually do adhere to that. You know, I drive from Santa Ana to Fountain Valley back and forth every day, and there's traffic everywhere, no matter what. It doesn't matter what city you're in, whether you're in Huntington Beach, whether you're in Fountain Valley, Santa Ana, there's always traffic. But I do look forward, when I see that do not, you know, do not block, I think that's great. That might be a consideration as well. I really commend you for the fact that you keep trying to build up that center and make it better, and, you know, who knows? Maybe somebody goes and gets a Big Mac and realizes that there's a Dollar Tree, and they want to go and chop up a Dollar Tree after they eat, because, hey, I didn't know that was there. Or, hey, there's a Cleaners, you know? We want our community to thrive. Yes, we're here for both sides, the city and the public, and we try to make the best decisions we can. That's, that's all I got.
Can I chime in on one thing? Because I, I know we've talked about current tenants, and kind of the way, when I think about this, right, is McDonald's came to us, we kind of went back and forth, how do we make this work? Then it had to go to Sprouts, right? Sprouts has approval rights, is the anchor tenant here, it goes through Sprouts' lens, and Sprouts is in full support of this project, and they had full disapproval rights. If they were in, in agreement with McDonald's, or the site plan, or the traffic, or the flow within the center, they could have bonked it for no reason. They didn't have to have some real reason to bonk the project. So Sprouts has been an approval project, and then we went to the neighbors, obviously, that we've kind of beaten to death, we had two meetings and got to know a lot of them, and, and tried to be good partners here. It's, it's what, at the community outreach meetings, it's just like what I said there, it's like, you put residential, commercial together, there's going to be friction, right? Both sides, we all understand that, you try to be transparent, you try to, they have my cell phone number, if there's a truck in, in the back this, like, Monday morning, and got like, hey, there's a truck idling back here. I'm calling property management, we're talking to Sprouts to make sure they adhere to the rules that are in the conditions of approval, right? So we're trying to be active neighbors here. In terms of the smaller tenants, and, and I know people that, whether they go to play football, Cal, I played football, Cal, Cal football player, Mike Zafell, lived right behind the center. He said, I went to Michi Pizza growing up, and the cool thing is, my first project, when I, we took over the center, was to go to those existing tenants, most of who were on month-to-month leases, who can't invest in their, their business, because on a month-to-month, if they could be out in 60 days, they're not going to reinvest back in their center, and say, hey, we want to extend you guys on 10-year leases. We've extended seven tenants on either seven or 10-year leases there. Gave them money to reinvest back into their stores, and today, actually on my way here, the eyebrow threading place reaches out and says, hey, I expire in 25, I want to extend. So we're, we're trying to do things right way. A good center, and this is what we specialize in, is going in neighborhood centers with neighbors around us, grocery anchored centers, centers that you go, you get your, your prescriptions from, you go to McDonald's, you go to Sprouts, you go to Dollar Tree. That's like what we do. We don't do big-box centers, we don't do power centers, this is our specialty. And it's to deal with stuff like this, right? We, we come in here, we got to go to Sprouts' approval, we got to go to neighbors, we hope to bring a great project, to revitalize corners like we hopefully have done here, and will continue to do. So, we appreciate it, but just want to know the layers this has gone through, the care we've taken with those tenants that a lot of people here have shopped at for the last 40 years, to make sure they stay in place, they have a center they can thrive in. McDonald's isn't going to come in and take out any of our existing tenants, we've thought through that, right? There's not a burger tenant there, there's not a breakfast tenant at our center, there's not, the Dutch Bros and McDonald's coexist, they want each other in the center, same with Sprouts and McDonald's. So, I'm here for any questions, but just kind of layers of how this has gone through on our end.
One thing I did forget to mention, I, I'm definitely against the 24 hours, though. I mean, I would rather align it with Dutch Brothers the same, same hours if possible, you know? 24 hours just seems a little much.
Yeah, I, we would, we would align with Dutch Brothers' hours if that's a condition of approval. We would agree to that tonight. So, can I bring up two other items that have been brought up during this? I promise I'll be quick. The first is decibel levels from the drive-thru. So our drive-thru at night is set such that it exceeds ambient noise by 15 decibels. So for example, if, let's just say ambient noise is 40 decibels, our speaker will top out... top out at fifty-five decibels. At the distance to the, the, the first house, which is seventy-six feet, our decibel level will be less than fifteen decibels. That's less than the noise that we have in this room with none of us talking. So I, I do want to say that we did take that into consideration and we are using an air con system where at, I believe we have it set for after six PM, it drops to fifteen decibels over ambient. So that's one consideration. The second one that was brought up was smell. We actually have changed our exhaust fans. They are now Green Heck Evergreen exhaust fans. What they do is they actually shoot vertically and the smell, the actual remnants of the fan is contained within our building envelope. So if you look at our parapet, it will be contained in that area. If you've been to a McDonald's that's been built within the last year, I will tell you the smell that is associated with french fries and such no longer exists in the parking lot of McDonald's, so.
Can you explain that again?
Yeah, it's-
Fan does, is it, is it like a Strobic fan that just shoots it straight up?
It shoots it straight up within the, our, our parapet. And it basically, it tops out on the envelope of our building. So it, it, it's a new thing that we've done over the last, I believe, is it the last year, year and a half?
Yeah, it's within about two years.
Yeah, and it's a new filtering system as well.
So you're talking about Uplast?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean-
Couldn't think of that word. I was, I was trying to do that.
What, what I'm used to though with Uplast is, the idea is not to, is to send it up higher so that it, solution to pollution is dilution. So you send it up higher and then it-
It, it actually fades within the envelope of our building.
It goes straight up and comes back down?
Yes.
Even though it's windy?
Well-
Even though we have the coastal breeze all the time. I'm sorry, I find it hard to believe.
I'm not saying that it will do completely with that, but I will tell you that the smell associated with McDonald's, if you go to one that's been recently built, it's a much different experience.
I guess it depends on location, right?
It does.
If you're, if you're on the down wind side of a building, you're not going to get, it's going to go up and come straight down, but-
Right. If there are, yes.
Where you're, where yours is sitting, it's going to be shooting straight from the ocean and, you know, it's, it's not going to go up and go back down.
Well, I think it'll be a much better experience than, or situation than you've seen in the past, just based on the filtering system.
Filtering is one thing, but as far as shooting it up, that's-
Yeah. I, I will tell you, I've been to them recently and here in the area and they're much better. Thank you.
So, yeah, I have, I have a couple of comments, I guess. And, and I guess, you know, as far as, as this location, and I think that's what a lot of the concerns are, is fine at a McDonald's in the city, but, you know, maybe this isn't the right location for a variety of reasons. You know, when, when you look at the existing, I guess Commissioner Spears, you mentioned, the majority of the fast food restaurants are on Brookhurst. And when you think about those, the Brookhurst locations, it's on Brookhurst. And so there's, and usually in shopping centers and it's close to Brookhurst, so it's really not near any residential areas, not anything as close as this. That, you know, idling cars, I, I don't know what your fans are going to do for the idling cars and, and I, you know, personally, I'd like to, you know, whenever I go to In-N-Out, I don't go to McDonald's since I watched the, the Founder movie. But, but anyways, you know, I always park. I park and I walk in because it's not, it's just not, it's not good for the environment. I'm sorry, you know? And, and the whole drive-through thing is just, it's just not, it's not good. It's not good for the environment. It's not good for residences that are right next to that area. And, and those idling cars are right at the back. Unfortunately, I don't think it's, you know, it's, it's, that's where you have to put them. You can't put them at the front and get them farther from, at least Dutch Brothers, it's out on, it's, it's, it's way out. It's farther from the residences than this. And that's, you know, that, if, if I backed up to, to that area, I'd have a concern. And, and remember, I mean, it's, it's, even if it's not a twenty-four hour, it's, even if it's, you know, five-thirty or six till eleven, you're still going to have cars probably continuously, all, however, somebody do the math, however many hours that is, every single day, there's going to be cars there idling and with that exhaust going right into those people's backyards.
Half the cars are going to be Teslas.
When, when that happens, then we have a different, we have a diff- different discussion. But, you know, I, I don't think they're half yet, I, you know? And, and if you, if you notice, I mean, it is, you know, we've got the ocean and so the predominant breeze is from the west, so it's going to be blowing straight to those residences right there. So I, I mean, if I lived there, I would, I would have, you know, a concern about that. And again, it's just, it's the number of cars and it's continuous, it's every day. And, and again, as opposed to where you have the drive-throughs out on Brookhurst, it's solution to pollution is dilution. So the farther you are away and, you know, if, if you're on Brookhurst, even if you're, you know, at, out on Magnolia where Dutch Brothers is, you've got time for that exhaust to dissipate. Here, there just isn't. And again, with the prevailing winds, it's, it's going to be going right into those, those neighbors. If, if it was approved, definitely we would need to reduce the operating hours, and I think that's been discussed about maybe matching Dutch Brothers. I think traffic, I don't, you know, traffic is bad, it's going to be bad, it's going to be worse. Because all those cars that weren't on Talbert before, they, the cars that are on Talbert now are going because they're going home or they're going somewhere. But now you're going to add, and same on Magnolia, now you're going to add all these people coming to McDonald's and to Dutch Brothers. And, and there's only, yeah, and there's only more and more being built from, in Huntington Beach that are all going to be coming across Talbert. So the traffic's only getting worse, we all know that. So again, if we did this, I mean, I think the, making the parking lot one-way traffic only, I think, could help at least make that eastern driveway usable. I think that would help a little, but, you know, just, just, I think it's, you know, maybe the, the, McDonald's is good for the city, it's good revenue, but just not the right location. And I guess one other thing, I mean, I guess the other thing that, we did get a letter, you know, we got an email from some people just bringing up the, you know, there's not the healthiest food. And you do have a lot of kids with the middle schools and the high schools and, and I know it's not your fault, you know, you, you're just providing it and, you know, it's, it's there for, they make the choice whether to eat it or not, but when, when a kid, when the kids, when the middle schoolers on Thursday half-days can, right now, they go to Subway and they go to Michi's and now instead they'll, you know, they can go to McDonald's. And they will because it's, you know, it's fried, good fried food, right? Well, good, that it tastes good. So I, I think that that is another consideration, that it's, it's, you know, out on Brookhurst, again, there aren't any schools right there that kids are able to walk to it. So again, McDonald's, you know, fine, good in the city, but I, this location doesn't seem the best.
And as much as we appreciate the, you know, the property owner, how much they improved the plaza, this is a bold move really. And I will not have to put any sticks in the wheels, but I don't think the homework is completely done. There's a lot of points raised, legitimate points raised by the residents here, and I jotted some that I think we need to see more on this project. And some of these, I don't know if you want to jot them down. There's too many streets that were mentioned by the neighbors and I don't know where they are exactly and which one, perpendiculars as a cul-de-sac on Talbert, which one exit on Talbert right lane only, which one can make left turn. I'd like to see the traffic, at least from Cashew to Magnolia with all these streets, names and the island of Talbert, so that we know the circulation because this will have some impact on these exits that exit from the north towards Talbert, if that's possible. I'd like to see also signage of the, of the property and the parking lot, as I mentioned, the right turn only, you know, on that exit. I'd like to see on the plan, between you and me, I've been living here for thirty years and I was the contracts manager on the four oh five project. I ate in every fast food restaurant around me. And there was many, many fast food restaurants, I mean, drive-in restaurants that had to remodel their parking configuration because all these traffic studies are empirical and they change after you build it. Look at now Sheik Filet at MacArthur and Bristol. It's closed for about, I don't know, four, five months at a tremendous cost because it didn't work. The traffic was all on MacArthur. Many of the In-N-Out, as you know, so it's not unusual for the, no matter what you study, it still doesn't work. So for that reason, I also recommend that reeval, if the project is approved, reevaluation after six months to see the impacts, whether we are, you know, we did the right choice or some modifications need to be done. I'd like to see, one gentleman said, the traffic modeling is not complete, it was made only for the breakfast and lunch, but not for dinner. Dinner could be higher peak than the lunch. I'd like to see a complete traffic study. As far as the emissions and, and the idling trucks, I'd like to see if there's some environmental expert in, in, from AQMD or, or, you know, private consultants who can make some air studies based on the traffic generated, the trucks' delivery. And I'd like to see some regulations on the idling of, I mean, any truck making delivery, they have to shut down their engine. Because I know diesel engines, they love to keep it running, stays warm, better for the engine. We need to regulate that. I'd like to see, we didn't see landscape of the property. Is there possibility that can, some cypress trees, high trees can be planted on the right side of the eastern alley in front of, to cover this, the residential? If it's possibility, I'm not saying it must be done, but it will alleviate of, a lot of these noxious fumes from the trucks and the cars. And, you know, it, it also, it is a sound barrier. They are not expensive cypress trees and they grow high and they are green all year, things like that. So hours of operation, I think we resolve it almost with the, with the gentleman agreeing to the Dutch coffee. So from that perspective, with all these things are still missing, I say the homework is not done. So, and so I'm filing a motion to shelf it until we receive another proposal for another vote, so that we don't want to, any project to fail. We want to encourage businesses, we want to encourage the income to the program. And these things that I suggested are not time-consuming. They can be done because I know you have your own consultant, you studied almost everything. It's just some modifications coming back to the city and this. That's my motion is not to shelf it for the second proposal that will address these points that I raised, so that we don't fail. We want to mitigate, we want to address every point that the residents raised, which are legitimate. And I don't feel that the homework is fully complete. But we encourage you to do what, you know, what will improve the situation so that it alleviate the concerns of the residents. That's my motion.
And I'll second.
If I may interject real quick, so I would like to ask the applicant in this case, sometimes they will, we prefer a decision and then they can appeal that to city council. Sometimes they believe if they can address the issues, they come back to you. And so I think, because they are entitled to a decision within a certain amount of time per state law, and so I think we need to defer to them to see whether or not they would request a decision tonight or if they're willing to come back and, at a date certain and with a updated proposal, so I think-
Did we consume all the time that we have to review such projects?
I would defer to them, I don't know, I had to look at the-
You submitted it, man.
Yeah.
It's been something-
It's been, yeah, I mean, it's running up against the time clock that we would normally-
We are.
So it's, they may request a decision or they may request a continuance, we can-
Up, up to you guys then. If you want us to vote, we'll vote, but you're taking a risk.
I would agree to a continuance. I, I continue, I would agree to a continuance.
They would be, so the applicant would be open to a continuance, either you would continue it at a date certain, or if not, then we would re-notice the item when it was ready to come back for you.
I have a quick question. When is Dutch Brothers supposed to be done?
I don't have a time, I don't have a timeline on their construction completion at this-
They're, they're moving pretty quick.
They're making good progress.
They don't have like a, they don't have a opening date at this point. I, I mean, they're, they, they're looking at, hey, they're done in first quarter with construction and then they hand over to their operations team, so I don't have a full date for you. I don't want to give a date and then have them miss it.
Yeah, and miss it.
But they're, they're obviously, you guys can see it moving along pretty quick.
Thank you.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the things I'd like to just remind residents of too is something's going to go in this spot, whether it's a McDonald's or not, he's, you know, he, the landlord has responsibility to fill that spot up with some type of business. So there's going to be some type of traffic or something that, depending on what, if this doesn't get approved, whatever he decides to put in there. So it, there's going to be something there, so you can, you can be assured of that. So I just, it's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
McDonald's without a drive-through? That's an option.
So, so what, when do you think it can come back with, with this? I don't know whether you-
I would hope within the next thirty to sixty.
When's the, when's the next one for, because the holidays admit just every now?
So maybe we continue it to the first meeting in February?
Is there one in January? Is there? I, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the holidays happen to just-
The second, so the, it'll be January tenth. January tenth, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth is the one after that?
When do we have to have our information?
So this is something we need to talk to offline. Either we would continue it to January twenty-fourth or I think safer is probably first meeting in February. That would give us time to, to get through these issues, but with the holidays.
Yeah, you needed about two weeks before our meeting?
Yeah.
The information, so let's make it February, that's where they'll have a chance to do because now holidays might be some tough time to get all these studies. I don't know whether you wrote what I said, but you got the idea.
Should we go through so we're clear on what we're asking for or you guys?
I, I think there was a, a, a good amount of public testimony. I think it's all recorded and so I think we can go back and-
I can give you a copy of this.
Review the tape if you like or give me your comments.
So-
But I think the motion, if you want to revise it, would be to continue the item to February fourteenth.
That's my motion. With the approval of the, of the owner- With the approval of the owner, that he will sub, resubmit by January, you know, anytime, and then we will meet first week of February to discuss the, what you have submitted. Hopefully it will mitigate the issue and, and things move smoother. Okay, so that's my motion. Who's second?
I second it.
Okay, let's vote.
I can't.
Can't vote? Okay, let's do it the old way?
For some reason my screen-
Omar, I can take a voice vote.
Take, take the votes.
Commissioner Esker?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
Commissioner Osborne?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Yes.